I'd like to call this planning commission work session to work for January 12, 2023. Mr. Turner, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Callum.
Here.
Ms. Height.
Yeah.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Sluter.
Here.
Chairman Greenwood.
Here. Next item on the agenda, we have the review and adoption of the meeting agenda.
Motion to approve the immediate agenda.
Second. Motion made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Turner.
Mr. Sluter.
I.
Mr. Callum.
I.
Ms. Height.
Ah.
Mr. Wagner.
I.
Chairman Greenwood.
I. Passes on before we have the work session, I'll start with for a discussion of our draft bylaws. Yes, Graham, do you want to go over it a little bit, or do we just want to sort of have open discussion? No, I have a few things I would like to add in there too, in addition to the things that you had added. Like I said, I also said the same thing we did about those at our board meeting, and like I said, a lot of those won't be concerned to us, but we can go over them. And I noticed, well, I was told Max was going to be here. Oh, there he is. Okay. Do we want to, what does everybody think on the board? Who are you going to do? Or do we just want to ask, does anybody have specific items from the board's rules that they want to incorporate into the planning commission rules? I did have a couple. I wanted to, there were a lot of things that Max suggested. wording like, we don't call it a public word session anymore. We call it citizens. So a few just clerical things I saw there that we had changed from ours. And we changed, there's no more five minute period for a group. It's all three minutes speaking for public hearings and citizens comment period. And I did want to add something about, we did have something called complete section about altered, not altered.
Electronic. Electronic?
Yeah, electronic meeting section. So there was a whole section on that. I think, I mean, we have done it in the past, but I think all we do is call that. It might be nice to have that whole section and they're called electronic meeting section. So I know probably go under Article seven meetings. And I wanted to add maybe five, four, the same thing as the board has talks about, well, duties of officers, but it's like the duties of the board is more specific than the duty. So the planning commission, so I said, highlighted some things to add a section like five dash four under duties of the officers. And of course, to carry out the same format as the rest of four, one, four, two, four, three, five, one, five, four. It started with all officers shall and the first thing five, four, one would be, remember same sort of things that have to be, I guess Max could do the exact legal definitions, but then add the two things that are in the board of supervisors that mentioned something about page. I noticed tonight we have a new updated board of supervisors, so the pages aren't going to be the same, but it's under section. Section five dash two, where it talks about interactions with staff. I mean, we always, we normally follow these things, but it's just never stated in our bylaws. I wanted to maybe add that as section five, four, two, the same thing that it says in the board, interactions with staff, no member, no one member of the board shall direct county administrator any step, but because we have to change the word. I guess we would change it to the one member of the commission shall direct the county administrator or any staff to take action on behalf of the board, behalf of the commission without the majority consensus of the commission. And then number two, no commission members shall unduly burden county employees with requests or contacts outside of normal working hours or meetings. Email requests made to staff should also be copied to the county administrator and chair at a minimum. So those specific things that I probably should, and it looks like Mr. Wagner had the same ideas, didn't he? Like, has any others that they really wanted to get in there? Or maybe we start, we start at the end, that would go down the line. Callum, do you have any that you saw?
Now, just back to the, one of the previous statements you made, limiting groups or individuals to three minutes. That's going to be for the board and the planning commission now, is that?
I would suggest that, we have passed it here, but we did pass it in the board because the attorney says that we should just have one time, one note, separate one for groups, because it just seemed to have gotten out of control. And we may be able to ask it, what was his reasoning? We didn't seem to ask at the board meet, but we just passed it, but he suggested changing that. Do you know, Ms. Graham, why they changed it to just three? Yeah, I don't think. Might be, so. We don't have to do it if we want to.
No, I just, and I think, I don't know if it, I'm just making sure to pause us as well. I think the board is trying to adopt that any questions to be asked to the board have to be submitted in writing prior to?
We could go that far if we wanted to.
I'm not suggesting that. I thought that's what the board had.
We did, but I didn't want to suggest all that detail for this commission, but we can, if the commission decides they want to do it, like I said, because if we get like that, we're going to have 12 pages of bylaws too. So I mean, I
And again, but I'm personally not in favor of having to submit questions. I mean, I think a person has the right to get up here and ask the questions they want to ask and not, not, and get the honest answer as it comes out your mouth, not having time to really make a can. Yeah. So I mean, that's my, my opinion. But I know, I know the board had talked about it. I don't think we've actually talked about it. So.
That the only thing?
That's it? Yes, sir.
Mr. Wagner.
Here, I just hit one minor correction. Eight point three point two. Lost, sorry.
I know, so many pages. Are you in the board?
Eight point three point two, yes. And the last sentence, their document destruction in accordance with the Virginia Public Records Act. I think we should add in there after destruction shall be in accordance with. That's the last sentence in eight point three point two.
See eight point three, but I don't see eight point three point two. Are you in the board or the planning?
Oh, this is in the planning commission.
Yeah, it's on red, but it's just eight point.
No, no.
Oh, oh.
Just before Article 10 hearings.
Oh, yeah, Article 10 hearings. Ten point three.
Yeah, eight point three point two. Lessened.
Oh, I see the numbers wrong. Right. Eight comes after nine, I say, right.
Yeah, I don't know what's. Yeah. Yeah, that should have been nine point three point.
Yeah, so I wanted something. I mean, that's a good catch. So first thing, I guess, as Graham knows, that changed it to nine point three point two, and then change.
After destruction shall be in accordance with. I think there might be a arrow in page. We've been saying six of six, four, six, six of six, and then we got page seven, so it could be six of seven, seven, seven.
Right. Any particular ones that you saw that you wanted to add or change or?
I don't have anything to add. I do, I do like the wording in the, in the board section five dash two of interaction with staff. I like that wording. That was the substance, the substance of what I was trying to get at in our December meeting. As far as communications with staff and copy. Get, make sure the chairs copied on, on interactions. I think that that's, I like the wording in that. I'd like to see us about that same thing as well.
And does everyone think that it should probably fit under where it says conduct of business article eight as like the last item of article eight makeup and the section five dash four? And then we can call that particular sections, each section five dash one, five, there's two, five, there's one is chair, five, there's two is vice chair, five, there's three is the secretary. So five, there's four, let's think of it to be all put all officers, but well, I guess it should be all office because it can't just be specific with the all officers and then five, four, one, and excuse the same wording as we have in the board of supervisors. Is that okay with everybody? Is that lovely, then?
That's all we got.
This night?
Um, I'm good with everything that we've already brought up tonight so far. A couple of those things were things that I had wanted to ask about as well. There's only one other one that I I don't know that it's necessary, but I thought I would ask about the decisions on points of order from the boards. Bylaws. The one that was provided in our packet was under section three dash nine on page 14. It's just one little tiny paragraph. But again, I don't know that it's really necessary as far as planning commission is concerned. So I'll let y'all think about it, see whether it's important.
Let's read that section. And we do have Max on the phone. Guess we could ask Ken. I don't know if that would be.
It's section three dash nine on what was provided to us.
The original.
The original in our packet was page 14 of 44. Again, it's just one little, it's like one, one sentence. So again, I don't know that it's absolutely necessary, but that's the only other one that caught my attention.
It's somebody else's thing. And where we're to go, I guess, maybe on the very, let's see. Is that specific points of order? I don't even know. We've had a point of order before, but we could.
Yeah, I don't think it's ever come up very often. So again, I don't know that it's really necessary for us to include in the bylaws. Like I said, it just came to my attention when I was reading through the boards. As bylaws, so. Again, if y'all don't think it's needed, so that doesn't come up often, we don't have to include it. But I'm okay with everything else that's going to go with that.
We could, we could throw it in under conduct of business article eight with all the new stuff that Sherry has added. It could be like at the end of which is the rest of the red section. Yeah, she's got eight. There's one, eight dash two, eight dash three tells about just regular means conduct of business. And that kind of sounds like a point of order is kind of the conduct of business. We could add section eight point four and put it to the three point nine, put exactly what it says, decisions on points of order and add it in there if everybody thought. Just like.
It's whatever y'all think is fine with me.
Yes, I can. Is Max, can you hear us?
Yeah. Yeah, I can hear you. I think there is a, there is a blurb within the current planning commission bylaws under duties of officers on page two of six, five dash one dash four. Chair is designated to rule on procedural questions subject to reversal by two thirds majority vote. Board of supervisors rules of procedure are reversal of a procedural ruling by a majority vote. So I see that as you know, if, if there's an inconsistency, it would be there. You could amend that to be a majority vote of the planning commission members who overrule a procedural question ruling by the chair.
Okay, what section was that? Again, I had pages all mixed up.
That, that was five dash one dash four of the planning commission bylaws.
And would you say substitute that one or add it there? Or you said it's the reverse of what the board said?
Yeah, I think right, right now, if you all wanted to make an amendment, as was suggested, to make it consistent with the board of supervisors. The board of supervisors is a majority that can overrule procedural ruling of the chair. So you could just substitute that language for the two thirds majority that is required currently under the planning commission bylaws.
Everybody okay with that? Yeah. Okay, so it's Ms. Graham, I guess, so that. Oh, right. Substitute section three dash nine of the board into five dash one dash four. Is that the only item?
And Mr. Chairman, what I would maybe recommend is because there have been some significant suggestions for edits that a edited version be sent around prior to the commission's adoption of the amendments so that it, that this item be postponed until your next meeting to give everyone a chance to see those red lines, just to make sure everything was accurately reflected.
I was wondering about that myself. Yes, that sounds even better. Then we can add with Sherry's red lines. They have the new red lines and come up. So you have a motion that we table this pending the revisions that we've all talked about tonight, and they get reprinted for our next meeting, and then we'll go over them and then adopt them at the next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
And motion made and seconded. Take a roll, please.
Mr. Callum.
Yes.
Ms. Height. Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Mr. Sluter.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood, Chairman Greenwood.
Hi. Bring this up to the next meeting. Revisions. Next item we have on the agenda is the discussion of the changes to chapter eighty six, article XIX dash ones. That's great. And this was already on our agenda. Was there like a drop dead date where it needed to be done by, or is that already passed?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ms. Graham, so we really don't have a choice with this. We have to, we have to pass this as is in order for it to. But, um, so the, the changes to the flood map, we will have say so in that at all, or? And just like the, the language in this, it's not, it's either, it's a it's an approve or, or deny, and that's it, right?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
I move we adopt the changes to chapter eighty six, article nineteen floods.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
What motion we have a second, and now we have enough time for more discussion. Is there any more discussion or any other questions?
I, I would like to add, at, at the last meeting, I raised concerns over this. It gave me time to go back out to several surveyors in the area. And what I learned in talking to them is historically when flood maps were done, it was just kind of a broad brush across the county. If they saw a blue line stream or something, they said, oh, this, this needs to be wetlands, whatever. The general consensus that I had gotten talking to these guys is the new flood maps are fixing a lot more problems than they are creating. The one question that the, the two gentlemen I talked to, when we adopted the flood maps in 2021, some counties, when they adopted them, they will automatically upgrade every year or whenever the flood maps are done. Is, is that the position we're in right now? And at that point, we automatically adopt. Well, I, I ran into this in Marl Hill subdivision, West Liberty, every property that backed up to the Monquean Creek automatically was thrown into a flood plain because basically wherever they showed Monquean Creek, if your property was within a hundred feet or so, they automatically said you're in a flood plain. The new technology now has corrected all of that because they're, they're, they're picking up the different, different elevations now correcting. So the, the general consensus I'm getting is that we'll still run into some issues and like you said, take them on a case by case basis, but it's correcting all more issues and it's a good thing. So in that regards, I would be in support of it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and it has been properly seconded. Mr. Turner, could you call the role?
Mr. Callum.
Hi.
Ms. Height.
Ah.
Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Mr. Sluter.
Hi.
Chairman Greenwood.
Hi. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, now, getting to the fun of the evening. Let's see, discussion of the pledge ordinance, which is the plan unit development district. Just wanted to state a few things at the beginning because it kind of, we all got out of the weeds last time, but the tonight's meeting is to discuss the county's pledge ordinance in general and to make revisions if necessary. It seems that some members have had a different interpretation than county staff does on this subject. The county planning that's on the director is our legal and binding official for King William. We're not here to micromanage or second guess the zoning director's decisions or advise on any matter brought to us with her. We can do it two different ways. We have the applicant that will score our last meeting and they are here to answer any questions if we have some, just like this isn't an open meeting, but they are here. If we want to ask specific questions about the problems they were having with the application, and we, if we wanted to start without doing that, or we could maybe go through and see, because I missed away, I had many issues about thinking that the master plan requirements weren't met. And where I wanted to go with that was the planning and zoning director is Graham with the assistance of the county administrator and the deputy county administrator met with the applicants over all these requirements. They had to listen to them. She knows them back and forth. And they went over the records with the advocate. She checked off everything as to the pertability with the planning commission, and she told us that the basic requirements had been met to her and staff's requirements. And like I said, it may not be everything specific to the point to every detail that we'd like. But as we know, this is only the first step. There'll be many more opportunities to discuss this with the applicant, and they're very open to have even more discussions with us if we need to determine all the specifics of some of the things that we had asked last week. I know that all the questions that were asked last week, they haven't even had time to find out answers, and some of them, they won't have answers. And I was wondering if Ms. Graham would talk to us about how, if we wanted to, how they came about. Like I said, she had the checklist, which is the same one we have of all these things on the master plan requirements. And like she said, they've met or are going to meet all these requirements. So maybe if we are comfortable with them meeting them verbatim, maybe we need to set up a two step put process and say, if these things with the actual CUP need to be done for the, for that, and then if they meet this, 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 or this specifically, and then go into more specifics, as I said, all the questions we had last week were very good, and they and then go into more specifics, which makes it all the questions we had last week were very good and they will be answered for all of this. I'm just throwing it out there, see how everybody wants to handle it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, yes, I, I disagree.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I don't know what staff has met, uh, what they might have said. I have not gotten a response to, uh, what I have submitted, what I will say. Um, first of all, not only does staff have a responsibility to interpret and determine the budget, but the developer also has that responsibility. Yep, that's, if it reads that way, that they don't have to go through all this, so then somebody needs to tell me. But the way I interpret this, and I think it's pretty clear, I've been over numerous times. And I think it's pretty clear, but, and I use the traffic impact analysis as an example. But the traffic impact analysis is required to be complete before. It's required to be complete in order for us to approve the rezoning. I've offered an alternative that we can go through if you want to, uh, of a way we can get around that, but I just put this out there for everybody to look at. If the board disagrees with that, they can pass it, but I believe we would be in error if we did pass it the way it's been presented to us. If you all want to look at the alternative out there provided, we can do that, or if you want to have further discussion, then go ahead.
Like I said, tonight is not about going over stuff that we have already done. This is to go over the PUD, the actual PUD ordinance to see if there are problems with it and have to change them if necessary. So CUP has already been moved on to the board. The legal representative will come up with the exact ordinance that needs to be written. We do not write ordinances here. And that email that went out, I'm going to say this again after the violence and you, or one of the sticklers for going after everybody else for going against the way things are to be done. You don't send stuff out to the whole board and to the commissioner and Ms. Graham with your opinions and saying, this is the ordinance I want written. We didn't have any say so in any of it. That is not legal.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You can.
I totally disagree.
We know you do, and that's why you did that.
Comments.
But.
If the board wants to proceed with this, we said this is, you said this is a discussion of the PUD.
Yes.
Ordinance. This is not a discussion of the rezoning?
No, that's already done. We can.
Hey, if you all want to pursue that. That's, that's fine if you all want to pursue that way.
That's what I was saying, if we need to go over the PUD, if you're worried about some things not being met, we need to go do these things and either say, this is your interpretation. It wasn't staff, it wasn't the administrator or the deputy administrator. They're the ones, it says specifically in the application requirement, the planning director at his or her discretion may establish additional application requirements for a PUD and/or may modify any requirements. They said they were met, they're met. Just because you don't feel they're met.
Mr. Chairman, yes, again, I have stated my opinion. I have done it properly. And this is the first I've heard of any response to it. So if you all wish to go ahead, then proceed on. This is, was not my opinion that this was a discussion of PUD, but if that's what they want, we want to do, we can proceed with that. But I think no, no purpose in the consulting in here.
Well, that's what I said. If we have concerns about the PUD not meeting certain things, we can ask them what they felt about it. If you're thinking they didn't met it, which you've already told them, as Ms. Graham said, some of these things they can't come up with right now. To her satisfaction, everything was provided as requested. So do we need to change this?
I'm, I'm sorry to keep pushing this, Mr. Chairman, but you said, if they, they can't meet these right now. The ordinance says that those are to be included in the master plan. And the master plan is the same as the preliminary subdivision plan. That's what we're working towards is, and that, if they can't come up with that, then that's fine. We can do it that way. But, but I, I have simply provided an alternate. If you're not in agreement with that, you don't need to further chastise me.
I'm not chastising you, Mr. Wagner.
You are, so.
Okay, well, that's what you think.
If you wish to move ahead, please do so.
That's not the way it's meant to be, but yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, after the last meeting, again, I was, I was in agreement with Mr. Wagner on a lot of what he was saying. After reading the ordinance and at the last meeting, the reason I made a motion to approve, because during the meeting I was reading what we have in here, and, and I think the problem is the way the ordinance is written, it's, it's a lot of gray area and I can see both sides of the equation here. But one thing that jumped out at me that I'd just like to read. "After the concept plan and pre-application meeting, a formal application for a PUD district application shall be submitted. A complete application eligible for public hearing shall consist of a master plan, design manual, and community impact statement." "The planning director," and this is the part I'm going to point out, "the planning director at his or her discretion may establish additional application requirements for PUD and/or may modify requi- requirements." So hearing staff speak, I was under the impression that staff was satisfied and was either willing to waive some of those requirements or had been satisfied in meetings that we had not been a party to. But as, as this reads, it, it, it is an incomplete package. But as you said, we're not here to micromanage staff. We rely on staff and Ms. Graham seemed like everything had been submitted. So that's why I felt the way I did. Further, further worn, and it's along ordinance, you know, one of the things that I brought up at the last meeting, um, that's also one of the requirements is proposed square footages. And I know we're not here to debate all this tonight, but I mean, that, that also was not in there. And I think that's a huge one. So I still, I still stand by, we, you know, we granted the conditional use and because of the reading of this and how it can be interpreted, I think what most people need to understand with a PUD is that is, this is not a typical rezoning where there's a one shot. We will have other opportunities to address these concerns, I believe. But what, what I made, what I discussed with the applicant last time is I do believe this was their one and only time for a public comment period. So the public did have a right to ask and get answers to the questions that they had.
That's, that's just how I feel about it. Well, that's what we had, we have Ms. Graham and deputy commissioner and administrator, if we want to ask them the questions. Like I said, they had this checklist. They went over this checklist with the applicant. But she said they met the requirements. We can ask them, how did they feel for that particular question? That they met it because they were checked. I mean, like you told me, there's some things that we provided later.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think this would be a good time if, if Ms. Graham would be willing to kind of give us a an idea of what we are looking at with these next steps, what, uh, what, which of those steps will be ones where we will have the chance to weigh in as a planning commission and make decisions as well. The whole part, purpose of a PUD is that the county and the developer is able to work cohesively uh, to accomplish, uh, what is ultimately a mutual, mutually beneficial project. Um, and in order for that to happen, we, we have to be understanding of what that entire process looks like and we all have to be on the same page. Um, Ms. Graham, if you could give us some of those, um, expectations that we, maybe even a timeline, what we're looking at?
Sure, microphone, we're not giving a note that they said they can't hear you.
Can you repeat everything you just started?
Verbatim, please, thank you.
Do you, do you want me to go back or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. Unless somebody.
So they have to, they have to meet all the bond requirements and so forth. And so once they do that, then they can get land disturbance permits and permits to put their infrastructure in. Um, once they get that infrastructure in and it's all been approved, then they can start obtaining permits to do stuff. Uh, and it, it's up to the developer, of most of them with a large development, they're going to do them in phases or sections. So they may come in with, uh, section one, which could be, and I'm just going to use it as an example, the commercial strip out front. They may start with that first. Then they could do, um, phase two, which could be the apartments. They could do phase three, which could be lots, one through fifty of the homes. So a lot of your developers will do it in phases.
So will those different phases come back to us or would just sent to us for comments?
We will get the overall, we look at the overall, if they do it in phases, but a lot of times the phases, we do still do a, a quick review on them to make sure that they meet the overall approval.
But it won't actually come back to the planning commission again?
Not the, not the individual phases unless there's changes.
So the, the one meeting we had is, is the only meeting we will have on this project.
For a public hearing.
We can have meetings at any time that we want to have.
I mean, you, you still can weigh in, you know, you're going to receive the preliminary, you're going to receive a copy of the final.
And, and what I was alluding to in all of this, again, I, I agree with how we moved forward last time. Obviously, I made the motion. But one of the next items on our agenda is about another four to five hundred acres that could possibly be asked to rezone for a PUD. So I think it would be wise for us to get these PUD requirements ironed out and spelled out. Because again, I, I, I agree with Mr. Wagner in the aspect, the, the way it's written now, it, it wasn't followed like that, but it also had the, the section in there where we relied on you guys, which is what you're there for. That's why I made the decision that I made. But I think with, again, I'm looking at here probably four to five hundred acres that could be coming for us again. We really should have that ironed out and know what we're getting ourselves into.
I agree. We should use this as a learning curve of what we do and do not want for the future to start looking at this ordinance.
And, and in regards, we're here to talk about the PUD. Is there a formula for the PUD? A ratio between commercial, single-family apartments, townhouses?
Uh, there is a square footage ratio.
What I'm saying is if something, if this, like this unit here rezoned to a PUD, could that entire piece of property be commercial?
What it says here, and there is percentages. It gives you a minimal, but not a maximum density. Um, and then it gives you a gross floor area permitted in commercial areas to be at least two hundred square feet per dwelling unit approved on the master plan, but cannot exceed a thousand square feet per dwelling unit approved.
I just, I, I was, the PUD section, again, I, I, I looked through it and I didn't see whether any ratios of how much commercial versus residential versus multifamily. And I think it would be wise for us to address that. And, and looking back, and I asked this question last time, and I, I hate to keep harping on it, but it, it's pretty big. Even in our R1 zoning, I don't think we list any minimum square footages. And I think that's a very slippery slope that we probably need to be thinking about. I know we have to follow some state guidelines with, with fair housing and affordable housing. But I don't think we want five or six hundred, twelve hundred square foot houses in one subdivision either. And I don't, I haven't been able to find anything in the code that addresses that. And I think other jurisdictions do, and I think we would be wise to at least take a look at that.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Ms. Graham, we said that the next step would be one, one, uh, preliminary.
Site plan.
Whatever, but, yes, but then we saw that they may be in phases, but before they, I mean, they can, they can build in phases, it's in the phases to us. But before we go to phases, not to be late.
They will, they will do an overall plan, but then they may come back and they want to do.
For control.
In, in, in phases.
In, in phases for control, but we will have an entire plan before we.
But we will approve and, uh, the entire site plan unless it is broken off into different pieces of property. But then a lot of your developers will come back and they'll do phases or sections. They'll do section one, section two.
I mean, that's, that's the operation. The other, sometimes, you know, but we can proceed from where we are to the site. And I'm fine with that. This was basically the resolution I proposed. But the other thing is a PUD development or a mixed-use development requires a method.
Um, at this point, it's, it's going to the board and, uh, I don't think we're ready to do a whole master plan at this time. I, I think we're better off to look and see what they submit. The master plan and the preliminary is going to be very similar, but they'll need to provide more information on the preliminary.
My, my, my point was, I'm okay with, with, we want to go ahead and approve this thing so that we can go ahead with the uh, preliminary subdivision plan of the site, the preliminary site plan. But at some point, we're going to keep that in that, whether that's done, straight down or not, I don't know.
And, and I think when the, when the, when the planning commission approved the CUP, we basically approved everything. From now, it's just up to the board.
As far as proppers and any other conditions, because y'all did not put any of that in there, you, you just approved the rezoning without adding anything. So, um, and that is something, you know, that the board can address with the proppers.
So, Ms. Graham, if, if I could, um, so the, the next step being the preliminary site plan, we will have the chance to approve that, correct?
Review it and give comments.
Okay. And then after that, there could be, there could be multiple submittals of that based on changes, correct?
And there normally is multiple submittals on a preliminary and a final because they do have all the agencies that will provide comments that they have to address before each agency is going to sign off. And of course, we can't sign off until all the other agencies have approved it.
And the final will have the same process, correct? Will it be sent out for a comment again?
For, for comments, mhm.
Okay. Um, and at that point, um, will that be where the phase, the different phases have to be, um, revealed by the developer? Or, you know, different sections?
I would hope they have that information. I'm not sure.
Or I guess at what point does that come in? How, I, I guess where I'm a little confused is how, how much information? Is, is presented at the next step for the, for the preliminary site?
So the preliminary is going to have a little more detail than the master plans that they submitted in their package. And you've got the, the ma- master plan narrative that they put in here. Um, they're going to have more information on utilities, they're going to have more E and S, the stormwater. Um, more information on the showing of the roads and that type of thing. And, and where the structures will be located. And they may not have that on the commercials, but they should be able to put an approximate pad down. Because we can't figure out square footage, I mean, we can't figure out the parking without square footages left commercial. Uh, we have a number of units that we can figure out parking for the, you know, apartments and townhouses and that type of thing. Make sure that it conforms.
Ms. Graham, if I might, one of the questions. You said we wouldn't have another public hearing. But must we get through the, like, say, completion of site plan? Should we not, like, publicly?
Public hearings are not required.
Not required, but not.
I don't think we can legally do another public hearing. Well, we've got our county attorney online.
Sorry, it's a little bit hard to hear, here. It sounded like you were asking a question about public, public hearing with respect to either a site plan or a preliminary subdivision plan approval?
Yes.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so might be easier to just sort of step back for a second. I, and sorry, Sheri. I didn't hear the beginning of your commentary, but. This, the next sort of one of the subsequent phases of, of this development process kicks the project into the subdivision ordinance, um, which is a, a separate ordinance from the zoning ordinance, which is a ministerial process. And the planning commission does have review input on the preliminary subdivision plat. But there's not a public hearing associated with that approval. That's not to say if it was the commission's desire, they couldn't hold a public hearing related to any application. But it would not be legally relevant to the review criteria that are before the planning commission within the context of the subdivision ordinance, if that makes sense. Because there are, it is a mandatory review process, and if the boxes are checked in the subdivision ordinance, then there isn't really discretion to deny an application. It's different from a zoning review where there is much more discretion to consider public input. You know, what the factors of the application might be, you know, consistent with the zoning ordinance and the public policies associated with that. So I, I, I wouldn't say that the planning commission is legally barred from holding a public hearing. But it would not necessarily be relevant to its consideration of factors under the preliminary subdivision plat approval.
Thank you. That answers my question.
So, so I think what we've learned about PUDs that we all can carry forward from this is basically the planning commission. Once we recommend to approve or deny the rezoning, after that, it's pretty much out of our hands and all goes to the board. We can, we can make comments to the board, but as a group, we're recommending approval to the board. Not only the rezoning, but basically approval of the whole project as a group. So I think, I think moving forward on the next PUD, you know, we can change some of the stuff in here, or at least we all know what we're getting into. If we approve rezoning. That's our one, because, because I, I'm learning it. I, I was not aware of that. I thought that we would have other opportunities as a group to address some of these concerns. But what I'm hearing is basically, we can submit comments to the board individually, but as a group, we have recommended approval and, and, and we're done with.
For rezoning, yeah. You can still weigh in and provide comments on the preliminary and the final review.
You, you say weigh in, that's basically just tell the board what we feel individually, not as a group.
Provide comments and we will provide those comments to the developer.
But that does not obligate the developer to make any of those just.
Not unless it's in our ordinance.
It doesn't come with the board again either.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not recommendations to the board, recommendations to the developer.
But, but our recommendation to approve still has to come through the board for approval. Of the conditional use permit?
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Right. So, but the, the board will weigh in on all the other items that we're not allowed to weigh in after the, at, at this point. We, we've ordered to approve, it's gone, we're done.
But I don't, I don't look at it that way. I think, I think, I think we, we have got to have review of the site plan of the. What goes into the site plan and. We should be making the recommendations to staff and be recommending to the board.
Right.
We should, we should be involved all along this process.
What I'm, no, no more public hearings for the public to weigh in, is, is where I'm getting at, so.
As, uh, the attorney said, we, we could request. But we just have to see how that goes with staff.
And again, I'm, I'm fine. I just, I'm just trying to understand in case it comes before us again, maybe we, we can go about things a little different.
Those are Ms. Graham's services.
It, it is a big learning process, so.
That's what I was wondering tonight, do we want to go ahead and make some changes to this PUD? Do you want to?
I think it would be too preliminary tonight, uh, but I think we need, we need to. Do a lot more review and a lot more discussion before we could go to make a lot of changes to this. It, it can be refined to be more understandable.
As Mr. Hill said, there might be another one in the pipeline if we keep waiting, they have to go. But this will still.
We, what, what we do in change and it doesn't apply to this, but.
Yeah.
Before we get another one, we, we want.
Right. Get answer the comments. Maybe table it, look at it in a different work session, go over it empty tail.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it, I think it needs to be something we, we need to constantly examine, um, especially as we go through this, um, this particular. But, um, we are going to learn a lot and it's going to give us opportunity to, to, uh, to see where there's deficiencies in our ordinance. And, and we, we just need to make note of them and, and be ready to, to make changes as needed, um, you know, for any future ones that come along.
And, and that, and that's where I get back to the ratios. I think the way it's written right now, someone could come in and ask for a real imbalance between townhouses or apartments versus commercial. You know, if, if we set some sort of standards, you know, 10% of it's commercial, only 5% of it can be apartments or something along those lines. Try to keep some, some balance in what we're, what we're getting. And we're going to, we're going to get into that. Item D about the rezoning map, so we can talk about that a little more when we get to that section.
You have a comment?
I just wanted to make a point to the planning commission that as we review the PUD and if we want to make any changes, that that's still something that has to go back before a public hearing to get approval for the overall changes we want to make. Um, but we do need to also take into consideration if we get any requests in. Um, prior to making those type of changes, we need to make sure that if we recommend approval, that we, um, take into consideration, um, whether we want, uh, any of those additions to be part of the conditions that we make um, as part of an approval. If I understand Sheri, um, from what got, um, done last week. Um, the recommendation for approval for this one would go to the board, but I don't think that we specified, um, adding the conditions that staff, um, recommended. That there, there were not specified. It, I mean, it's still, staff is still going to recommend the condition and it will be up to the board.
If I might jump in for, for a second, just for clarity of, um, sort of concept and terminology. I, I believe the application that came before the planning commission was a rezoning application, not an application for a conditional use permit. So there, there's actually limited ability for the planning commission to impose conditions on that legislative application. Well, you, the planning commission could recommend approval, you know, subject to conditions specifically for a conditional use permit. Um, you know, which is a related, but, but different legislative application. I- in the context of reviewing a zoning application like a, you know, from R1 to PUD. Um, those conversations would be, um, had in the spirit of the application perhaps not being consistent or as consistent with the intent and language of the PUD ordinance as the planning commission would, uh, would like, you know. To your earlier point, perhaps the ratios aren't, um, you know, as favorable or aren't, you know, consistent with what the planning commission would like to see in a particular area of the county. Or there are missing elements that the commission thinks need to be fleshed out more, such as traffic impacts or whatever it might be. But there is not the ability for the commission to, um, condition approval specifically like they could for a, um, conditional use permit.
Um, and another thing, and Max, please weigh in on those if I'm incorrect in any way. But when you approve a PUD and you approve their conceptual plan or their master plan with the apartments and the townhouses and the stuff. We don't go back for a conditional use permit like we do with somebody else's wanting to put in apartments or something in the R1 district. R1, like the townhouses in McCully Park or anybody else's wanting to put in apartment or townhouse, they have to go through a CUP process. But under the PUD, if you've approved that use under the rezoning, they do not have to come through, um, with a, a conditional use permit application for approval.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm responding to his comments. The parcels that are on the future land use map, uh, for PUD are in the alet end of the county, and we don't have water, so we're there, so we won't be discussing, we won't be looking at any applications in the time soon. Do we want to table the PUD, Mr. Chairman? Yes, I'll move that we table the PUD until a later date.
I'll second that. Definitely second.
I agree with you. Anybody have any? Nothing. Not agreeing with him? We don't have a voter on this table.
No, I mean, if, if, if somebody wants to bring it up.
Okay, we'll table it and then do you have a date in mind or just move on if that affects some other data?
Do we want to do a work session?
Again, it's, there's no danger that comes up anytime soon. We do need to look at and spend a little time on it. So I, I'd rather than set, set a date now, uh, if you can bring it up. At a later date.
Okay. All right, so that's tabled until a later date. We'll move on to the next item. We have the review of the zoning map.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um. We have to consult here. Is there, do they have any comments they want to make to us?
Oh, about. The zoning map, I don't know.
No, about, I mean, I, I, I understood they were here.
They were just here in case we wanted to ask them questions, but I, I mean, if you want to ask them questions, they're, they're here.
No, I don't have any questions for them.
But I thought maybe if we were going to go with PUD, they could ask us, or they could tell us somewhere there. Like you said, this Graham and the administrator went through the checklist and they all said that everything was fine. I, I was going to say with them. If it isn't fine according to you, what problems were they having? What would they like? We don't have any other questions for them.
No, that's true. I, I would, I would like to know if they have any comments regarding, regarding the PUD. Or if they have any suggestions to our ordinance itself, I think that would be helpful to know if they're so willing to.
I think they are. That's why they came in. Like I said, it's not normally a public comment, but they were asked to, they can come. If you'd like to, either one of you like to come up and maybe say at the mic, some things that you've heard tonight or.
Evening. Uh, Don Farlow, I have a lot of stuff to speak. So I don't really have much to add, and I think the point of it, but to make sure, uh, you have involved or, sorry, I'm not a deal with all their, uh, personal experience. Uh, obviously, one parent to decide, I don't think it's murder, thanks all that you've mentioned. Uh, and, and finally, I'm going to continue to present and, uh, you know, make sure that you got TR spending experience to support it. You've got a practical, something I'm like to do in the department. Uh, the only thing that I will say, this is, again, for my minimal experience, I guess, to grant, I think, so. Uh, it is due to flexibility, if you're talking about possibly putting a certain on the others, which I think possibly is an idea for specific stuff. And I would always take it to help now to folks, if it's a majority, to make things better. So I'm just having to stand that, you know, and say that you never can make it, and I don't want to just come down. Uh, but I just think it's, uh, the doors, it's just, I was putting a research, we didn't have a source to tell. Uh, but other than that, I have a reason for it, so I don't really have.
I just had one that, I guess was mentioned before, you are developing many other areas, other counties out there, but, but similar to ours? Or do you have same issues with those counties as ours? Like I said, this is our first one, so.
Yeah, we understand that the big project, the county, I think we do understand that it's just the first one. I would say generally speaking, again, with my, in my experience alone, is that, uh, we, we see less focus on some of the, the site specific questions that we can see in black on the video, and it is more prior about the, the redesign as a whole. With the intent of finding a good plan that fits our majority, which is typically supposed to be good for. Um, but, and I think if you're like that, I think it's, the, the focus is typically a little bit more on the broader becoming of the, of the general concept that is acceptable for this and that to plan.
And I guess as Ms. Miller was stating, thus, you will be willing to work with us at any stage, like this. We have questions or if we want more discussion, we, and of course, you don't have it right now, but later on, you would be willing to come back and discuss with us?
Absolutely. Same thing, I think, at this point, I tried to start last time, if you are, so if you want, you know, we're all doing the difference overall and we're, we're here, our doors open, just like Jack, we know the guy, just to see that.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. I thought you were going to be on Zoom, she shows up anyway. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the review of the zoning map. Yes, Ms. Graham, second with you, or is I something?
We actually are going to put the map up on the screen, so it makes it easier for everyone to see. So you should have a smaller map of the, the different parcels that we have talked about. And we were just walking along one side of 30.
Those parcels outlined in purple, that's on 30?
That's on 360, but if you're at Central Garage and you make a right, um, going toward River Road, that's the side that we were focusing on. that's the side that we were focusing on. Uh, we make it a little smaller. Can you make it a little smaller where they're able to see it? So we have an idea of the parcels that were, that they're looking at as a possible, um, rezoning.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, am I able to ask a question? Uh, can I go back to Mr. Parlow?
Oh, sure.
Just, I, I had one question. You indicated in the last, and it, it pertains to this, possibly running natural gas to your project. Would, would, that line would be extended from the Hanover direction to your project? Would there be any possibility of that being extended further down three sixty if some of these commercial buildings needed, or I, I know that would be on you, but I'm just saying, is it?
Yeah, so, uh, so I can hear you.
I'm just wondering if it has some expansion capabilities?
Yeah, so I'll start by saying certainly not my expertise, but so I think, um, you know, as I had expressed last time, natural gas, of course, the, the company who's doing the work for Virginia Natural Gas, they're, they're need to make a profit to justify it, right, because they have shareholders and everything. Um, so I think that the short answer is, if they can justify the cost, then absolutely. But, uh, what I had mentioned last time is, to my surprise, actually, that the residential is what is driving it. And of course, I think commercial users appreciate having the ability to connect to natural gas, but, um, the, the project of the residential is what's driving it, so I think it all just depends on the type of commercial user. If they're a high gas user, I think there's going to be a lot more willingness to, to bring it, but the more clustering you can get, uh, the more it makes sense for them, it's, it's literally a cost, you know, decision.
So requirements on you as a developer, are the, uh, single family housing and or apartments going to be required to have dual fuel systems to utilize the gas?
Uh, I'm not sure I understand dual fuel.
Well, when, when electric converts over to gas, if the temperature drops, um, or is it going to be straight, are they requiring it to have straight gas heat so that they can justify that the cost?
My, my understanding was they were, uh, in order to bring it as far as they're bringing it in this particular case, the request was to have the, the HVAC system be gas as well as the, um, the hot water heater. So fully gas for this project, now that doesn't mean it would be the same if they're only running it for a couple hundred yards down the road, they may have more flexibility.
Right. Okay. I just think, I think that is a good thing to know moving forward when we're talking about the, the zoning map and things that could, could be coming up in the future.
Like I said, it sounds like it wouldn't be probably good enough for just a commercial user to have it, but if we were going to have another, but Mr. Wagner says we can't have it down that way right now.
Right now.
But if it ever was.
Yeah, at, at some point in the future, I hope we're headed that way, Steve is gone, but. I would say I actually have a question for Steve, Mr., maybe Mr. Ashcraft can answer, but where, where, where does water and sewer stop? Going down three sixty towards Alet, is it at Kennington?
I think so, yeah.
It does run through there, of course, gas, that's not, but.
Right, gas, gas would stop at Mr. Parlow's project, water and sewer continues down, I believe, to the new commercial warehouse building on the corner, they have water and sewer there.
They do, I don't know if it runs along three sixty or it runs through the development.
It goes in the main entrance of Kennington, loops around and comes back out. But my, my point being that at that point, there are portions of what we've got outlined here, the future PUD, that would become serviceable by, by water and sewer.
At the current. It's, it's not a very far distance.
I mean, Steve mentioned in one of the board meetings that they're going to put a new tower, they're going to make a loop that everything's combined, but like you said, I don't know if that means the lower end of the.
That's on the other side of.
Coming by Alet, yeah, okay.
One day, but.
Not just, not just that. The, the four hundred acres in Alet compared to Mr. Parlow's project, it's about three times bigger, so someone can conceivably have thousand, twelve hundred houses. To Mr. Slurda's point, at that point, extending water and sewer another quarter mile would be incidental at that point.
That's true. Please, best, best look at this, as I, uh, it makes me, I don't know, residential.
Back, back, back to the ratios.
Does anybody have any questions about the zoning?
So I, I, I know this has been a, a talking point back and forth. Are, are we still looking, or have we, is that what we're here to talk about tonight, to pick some specific properties and start rezoning some properties? And we, we went several directions with this about asking the landowner, did they want to do it? Are they going to still pay residential taxes until a point someone purchase it? And, and I think that's kind of where we left it, so I guess we're here tonight to vote on that, decide that, and, and let's move forward one way or the other with that.
And that was what we had talked about, and then, so, um, please let us know what direction you want us to go with. If you want us to notify, um, some of these property owners and get their input at maybe one of our, what we could have a public meeting.
And one of the questions, and, and I think you answered me, so forgive me, but the, the four hundred acres I keep going back to is currently in land use, would rezoning kick them out of land use?
From what I understand, the rezoning would not, but when the use of the property changes.
It would, absolutely.
They have to go back so far, um.
Seven years, I think, to get paid back taxes, but I was on some segue on the same sort of thing, what about individual users, we were saying like some of the residential people may not want to do that if they have to change their taxes to be able to talk to the, uh, the commissioner of revenue about, it's the same way, it doesn't change until it actually turns into a commercial. It's eligible to be, but they don't pay the taxes for business until it turns into a business.
And we can certainly ask for her to chime in, but talking with her, she would not change it, but that's not to say if another commissioner of revenue came in that they would not. She wouldn't change it until the use changed, but another commissioner of revenue could come in and it, it would change.
And, and back to land use, I think the rule is when you take it out of land use and change zoning on it, you have to pay the five years in arrears on the back taxes. The other part of that was the, the businesses out there that are already being utilized as commercial. We kind of bring those into compliance. But at that point, if they're still paying residential taxes, if they've been used as businesses, they, they need to go
to business use.
To business use, and then the other ones, if we decide to move forward, would stay residential tax based until a point in time, they sold it or themselves turned it into a business, and then it would go to the current tax rate for that business.
But, yeah, I think one thing that we ought to be looking at is, if we have parcels out there that are zoning, they see and are actually doing, have a business in that location, we ought to change those. And, and they would have a better tax for business use.
And we do have, um, a few along three sixty, uh, especially going toward the pink with side that are business.
And if.
But they're not.
And we shouldn't have to go ask the people if they're not, if they want to do it or not, it's necessary.
Now, now, would they be required to pay back taxes as well, or?
Uh, the commissioner of revenue have the back determination on that, but, uh, we'd certainly want to change if, to the current, to what the current zoning should be.
And there would be a public hearing for any changes like that, correct?
Or any rezoning changes, um, you know, everybody has to be notified within a certain distance and it's in the ordinance. Um, and there are public hearings for that as well.
So I, I would be, I would be in favor of, of rezoning some of these properties, because again, I go back to having stuff shovel ready and, and stuff for the EDA to possibly show people if people come along, but right now, you're identifying one side of three sixty from Central Garage to Alet. If we were to do that, I mean, are we going to follow through, is that going to set the precedence?
For the other side.
For the other, both sides and all the way to the Hanover end of the county.
Do you want us to go ahead and proceed with information on the other side, does it say what we're looking at?
You already did, I guess not all the way.
Again, we got, there are certain areas that we don't have, so, so we're not going to be doing a whole lot with those, I mean, I, I would, I would prefer to look at all this as future, with the future land use map. Should be resoned to, uh, and I think we would need a lot more information and review of the property and the opportunities before we think about rezoning a lot of these parcels, particularly the market park.
As, as far as any immediate changes, I, I, I think that the, the parcels that are currently operating in, in the business, as a business entity, to go ahead, we should go ahead and make that change to the, to those that, and I think that if we're going to do it to one side of three sixty and there's a, a business on maybe AC or, or whatever, whatever alternative zoning, it could be one, they could only be fair, that we do it that, through that entire stretch on both sides of three sixty.
But it would, I'm sorry.
We, we could look at both sides, you know, just to see what the, what the situations are in, you know, cases. But again, uh, I, I don't think we want to do a mass rezoning.
No, I, I'm just saying, for the ones that currently have operating businesses.
Right, right.
And, and I would say that i- if we do not do some sort of rezoning, then we're back where we started. We still have no properties rezoned and ready to show a potential person coming to the county. We, we, we don't, we, we have a handful of properties in the county rezoned, ready to go. I think we need to have multiple sizes. If, if a small business wants to come, we have several lots that are available with every, you know, hopefully a large company came along, we have sites that would accommodate them as well.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I really think that's what the purpose of our EDA is. You know, if they, if they can identify sites that they think are, will bring development in, then I think they need to get involved in this and tell us what those sites are, but again, I, I just to go out there and rezonate a lot of properties and say they're, they're already, um, just doesn't fit. I, I think it's more important that we show what the intent of the county is, of planning commission in the county is by, uh, by the future land use map, the, the usage that we put on, on the future land use. Just go out there and rezonate electric properties unless we can, we can, and, and preferably with the, uh, recommend the EDA, we could look at some of the parts that may be, uh, useful for site development, for site development. But again, um, I just think we're, we're looking at a bunch of parcels and saying, these are ready for the applicant, uh. And we also had the, I think the board certainly has the authority. If we've got a prospective business coming in, the board has the authority to make certain concessions to that business. And that could take care of the cost of, of the reason, certain other thing. So I, you know, I just, uh, I just have a real problem with, um, doing any kind of major rezoning, other than just those parcels that are currently uh, used for something other than what they're zoned for.
And, and again, I'd, I'd add to that, if, if we do that, then we're back right back where we started and not having any properties rezoned. And to go through, to go, excuse me, to go through the process from beginning to end is a six month process. And how many applicants are we going to lose, or potential clients are we going to lose? And when you refer back to the future land use map, a large section of both sides of three sixty through the mannequin area where we're getting ready to run water and sewer potentially is not in the future land use map for commercial.
Uh, some of that, some of those properties are undevelopable, that's the reason that the planning commission, um, provided the, the future land use map, uh, but providing these own, future zone, the way they did. There are parcels, there are some good parcels in the Hanover end of the county, uh, good parcels on, at the end that are very difficult and, uh, should be considered, that we're going to have water and sewer down there, uh, I hope, so we'll take care of stuff toward the Hanover County line anyway, but, um, again, I, I just, uh, I had a lot of problems with trying to go in there, with any kind of a major rezoning without, but a whole lot more study, review.
To, to your prior.
Choosing particular properties that are the more developable and, and have the water and sewer there, rather than just saying we're going to rezon.
But to your, to your prior point about, it's going to be some time before we see water and sewer to Alet. There's going to be some time before we see water and sewer to the Hanover side of the county as well, because it stops at the Commerce Port.
The Hanover County side is going to be sooner than Alet.
So they, uh, Christina pulled up our future land use map, which was the map we just recently approved. So you get an idea of what we were looking at for the future. So everything in red is, uh, commercial, uh, proposed commercial parcel.
It's, it's proposed, but it's not yet resigned, so if someone came in today and said, this is in your future land use map, I love that piece of property, I want to put my business there, they're going to go through six months.
They will have to go through the public hearing process and.
The planning commission, the board, big hearings, everything, so it's, it's a six month process at a minimum. And I just question, how many, how many people are we losing?
Don trade, what we were just telling you earlier, they're showing all red commercial on the left side of three sixty and Alet, that none on the right side. They're already proposed commercial all the way to the river.
I mean, we, we can't go back and change future land use map anytime.
And some of that is already commercial.
As I said, we have a lot of businesses, most of them on that side are already businesses, so I don't know.
We have a lot of mom and pop, um, especially when you get closer to the, the stoplight up there, and we have a couple of vacant um, businesses, but we have a lot of mom and pop deals going on close to that intersection. And then we have a couple of businesses that have closed down.
The other issue that I, that I have already always had is if we go in there and rezon it, um, to commercial, uh, the way our metrics is set up, uh, we don't have any control over what they build, what they burn. And I'm not sure we want to be in a position of not being able to manage the development, uh, of that corridor in particular.
I, I've heard that comment several times. I I've heard that comment several times. I mean, wouldn't it be easy enough for us to go into our matrix and put in there what we do not want?
That's one thing that I've suggested.
And that way we don't get it if we don't want it. But if we, if we list a half a dozen things we absolutely do not want, then that means we're open for business for the rest of them.
That's true. It kind of sounds like it. Maybe if we, it sounds like the compromise here might be if we can get it, if we can all come to agreement on our land use for uh for the business side. If we were to rezone, if we were to do several rezonings of vacant property and we're comfortable with whatever land use within that zoning would be, then we can, that would be something we maybe could all come to agreement on. That would, would that, is that, that work?
I I I think, again, I think the first step is to to put it in the future land use map if what we want to be in there. And then, as Mr. Callen said, uh, go through the metrics and see if we want to make some changes. Francis, one of the things in the matrix is a shopping center is by right. Uh, if somebody comes in, wants to put the shopping center in, we don't know what's going in there. You know, we don't know if they're going to have some uh as Stephen may remember from outside of this session, some of the types of development they they had proposed. Um, you know, so I I think we need to take a good close look at that matrix before we move ahead to reset to just brighten my rezone something and and for anybody to come in and use for whatever they might want to use. Yeah, it brings born business into the county, but at what cost?
So I I would say maybe what we need to do, go ahead and we need to rezone ones that are currently on, you know, operating with the business. We need to look at our zoning that, I mean, I'm sorry, our
Future land.
Our future, uh, no, I'm sorry, our use matrix.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Right, change the matrix.
And once we have done that and we feel comfortable with it and we need to do that with the idea in mind of looking at certain tracts of land. Um, and then, and then that gets us to a point where we can rezone and feel comfortable with whoever comes in there. Um, and having something that is ready to go as as Mr. Callen put it, you know, more shovel ready, so to speak. So I think that that kind of needs to be our our step by step.
We need to get to the place where we have some control, not not control, but manage. And and Hill Studios use that term managed rather than, and it never used control.
Well, you know, put that on a future work session, look at the matrix and then they can get that ready.
So just, I'm all for that, but but the longer we kick this down the road, the longer we're not open for business.
We're not, as I said, we're not, they're not open for business. With what?
Business can operate off a well accepted, some can, yeah, most any business.
Yeah.
But if we have it zoned a certain, a certain way, we feel comfortable with it, like, like we were just talking, you might find a business that is willing to pull those utilities down to that desired piece of land that they want. So, you know, we can, you know, that's, that's another reason why, you know, just, we need to, we need to shore up our, our our use matrix and and um, and I I think that, and that's something that we probably go through fairly quickly. Um, with the, at least the business part of it.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be fairly easy to look at that use metrics and and make determination. And I think we could do that uh easily in a half hour, forty five minutes and even less.
So are are we saying once we revise their use matrix, then we would go ahead and rezone properties both sides of three sixty like we're talking about?
Right.
I would be open for that.
Again, I'm if if you're saying rezone both sides of three sixty, I'm totally.
Sir, sir, even after we revise the use matrix.
Oh. If it complies with the use method, yes, but again, um, let's let's look at this in a, in a well, take a better look at this to see what makes sense to rezone rather than just go out there and say, we're going to take all the side and rezon. Let's look at what makes sense to rezone. What is, um, you know, after we look at the use matrix, what what fits there? Um, and and then we can take a look at possibility of rezoning, but uh, just to go out there and start saying we're going to rezone the whole side of it, you know.
What if we? What if we take the future land use map and the areas that are in red for commercial? Identify each of those parcels and what their current use is and bring that to you. Because a lot of it is already going to be commercial. Some others not, but we get to what the zoning is on it. We have some up uh in the aillet area that are zoned industrial right on three sixty. So we're close to those, to the light.
We do twenty seven acres.
So we can look and see what the current zoning is of what we have in the future, your plans and snap or commercial. And and see how that is falling in line with this. I mean, if that's something that you want, we can certainly do that.
Oh, are we limited any way? This would be a legal question on, on maybe Mr. Ashcraft. We can all sit here and think in our minds of certain things we don't want business wise, but is that a slippery slope across as a county? Should, I mean, should we really?
Well, we have two different business districts. We have B one, B two. So we have the industrial, which allows certain types of businesses. Um, and you have your matrix. So it's either going to be permitted by right, not permitted at all, or permitted with a C P P. With, if it's permitted by right, you can not put conditions on it, but if it's something you want to allow with conditions, then you need to do a C U P process, what like.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm all for the matrix. I've always said you can control what comes to the county by the use matrix. I I still, at some time in the near future, would like to see us have more parcels rezoned, ready to go, because we potentially lost a lot of projects that were looking at King William County that when they learned how long it was going to take to get from point A to point B, they just went somewhere else that was was ready and and available at that point.
And and you're correct on that. I mean, if somebody has to come in for rezoning and it's a big project, they're going to be months just trying to get the site plan and so forth ready from the surveyor, even if it's just a conceptual or preliminary, it's going to be several months just to get that, that work done. And if they're wanting to start a project in six months, there's no way, because it's going to be three months going through the public hearing process with us, once they do submit everything.
Sherry, there is. Sorry, there, there is one other um option just for while the, you know, the commission is considering um sort of these bigger picture questions is a uh use that is permitted by a right with performance standards that are adopted as special regulations in the zoning ordinance. So I I agree with you that there are, you know, these ways to treat different uses within the matrix. Um, that is another one that some jurisdictions use, a- and I think you all do have um some treatment of that, but if there were particular uses that the c- commission is interested in, you know, partnering with the E D A to attract, but there are limitations on what those parcels or um, you know, uh, utility restrictions, whatever there might be, are, that would be another more granular way to address some of the um, the use concerns.
We could look at that and I'll get that section if we have it in the ordinance. If not, then that's something we may need to look at.
Is, is the um the land use matrix something that we'd be willing to go over at our next meeting?
Looking at the matrix, that, that, that should be very simple, I think.
Yeah, let's, let's do it.
That would be a good first, first step thing.
Next meeting.
And Sherry, I'm sure your staff can probably go ahead and start putting together a list of the um, parcels that are currently operating in a business format and we can identify those that, that we can, I guess, more urgently change.
So it's under the door. We go to the next thing, the discussion of this transportation order overlay.
Um, just before you, before you jump off of that item, as a matter of process, um, changes to the zoning ordinance can be initiated by a couple of methods, one of which is by motion of the planning commission. So just so you all don't get hung up on um having to go back through a a legal formality. If if you wanted to be able to move forward with consideration of, you know, the use matrix at your next meeting, whether that's a work session or a regular meeting, um, you all could make the motion to, you know, initiate or the consideration of changes to to that section of the zoning ordinance that would allow staff after your next meeting where you consider those to advertise the first public hearing that would be related to whatever you all would be interested in changing. So um, just, it it might be easier to to take that step, that first step now, um, and adopt a motion to um initiate change, you know, the consideration of changes to the zoning ordinance, whatever that specific section is, I could find it for you, but.
Yeah, Sherry, is he going to search for?
Stuff. Yes.
Let's see. Uh, it looks like it's article.
Amendment procedure division four.
Um, article seven, section eighty six dash one forty. So if that is the commission's desire to initiate the consideration of those, those changes, I think motion could simply be in the form of, you know, moving that the commission, you know, initiate consideration of changes to section eighty six dash one forty of the zoning ordinance. Um, and then that would allow staff to prepare um, the materials for you all to look at at your next meeting or or whichever meeting you decide to consider that.
As Chair, if you, if I could, I would like to make a motion to initiate changes to the uh use matrix, section eighty six dash one forty at our next meeting.
After we move, you'll have a second. I'll second that. There's a wait, seconded any other comments? Mr.?
Mr. Callen?
Hi.
Ms. Hyde? Uh, Mr. Wagner?
Hi.
Mr. Slitter?
Hi.
Chairman Gremlin?
Hi.
Have that ready for our next meeting, Chair? Yeah. Now, I guess we move on to the discussion of the transportation corridor overlay. It's Sherry then.
I think we've put this on the back burner a couple of meetings here, but the, the biggest change was building exteriors. Um, so I will read uh the change that we made and uh, on this particular one, building exteriors visible from U S highway three sixty or state highway thirty shall be stucco natural wood siding, brickstone, decorative block, neutral colored cementous siding or other materials with similar texture and appearance. Um, and shall be provided, that that needs to be changed. Uh, nationally recognized and or other trademarked colors, logos, pictures or similar type features may be permitted on the building facade, awnings or other complimentary uh architectural features with the approval of the zoning administrator. Vinyl siding, flat or corrugated metal and concrete block shall not be used for exterior siding material on any building, except that vinyl siding may be used as trim material. The exterior covering material shall extend to the ground, except that when a solid brick or masonry perimeter foundation is used, exterior covering material need not extend below the top of the foundation.
Mr. Chair. Uh, Ms. Graham, we, I know that we discussed before um the standing seam that'll, having that included in there as well. Um, much like what we see with uh Dixon's. Um, and the picture I showed you in Chesterfield, just up the street from my, my place of work. Um, it's a long standing, high quality um metal uh at last, it's um it, it, especially when used in conjunction with um, with a, a brick or some kind, some kind of veneer with it, it it really does pop up and and not, and I think it should be in there.
Would that, uh, would that be stainless steel?
I believe it.
No, it's.
It's not, it's steel, it's not stainless steel. You have corrugated metal, which we don't want, but.
Galvanized.
Doesn't come to me right away.
Galvanized.
But it's, you're galvanized, galvanized um has a lot of problems. It's rust, uh, it's susceptible to uh
Yeah, I don't think the standing.
Scratching and whatever. It's stainless steel does not rust.
I've got to give credit to uh Dixon's Automotive. I don't know if anybody came through there during the holiday season, but that was probably one of the best looking buildings in King William County uh with the landscape and of course they had lights and stuff like that up, but that that is a, a good looking building, I think represents us well when you enter the county. So I think that's a, a good argument to support the steel siding in use with stone or brick, you know, the three foot high like they did and then the rest of the way. And of course they added awnings, they have the trees and the shrubbery and and the rock, they, they have a tremendous amount of site work, really even to get that piece of property buildable, but even after the fact with with the, the plantings and the rock and so forth, but that, that's what really swayed me more towards the metal. It was just how that building looked.
I think we want to specify standing seam. Is it coated metal?
I think I know what thing, thing it is.
I say standing, standing seam is going to leave you open to a lot of interpretation. I I think we need to say steel siding. It does come in colors. Uh, you don't, it's steel siding, not something that you put up in paint. It comes in colors and the panels go up in whatever color you like, much like the Dixon building. I I don't know the correct. I know it's steel siding, it's not standing seam. Standing seam is what you put on a roof.
Okay, so steel siding uh, steel coated siding? Would that be the correct term for it?
I don't, I don't think it's coated. I think it's.
Yeah. Can, can we just decorative steel siding?
Yeah, that works. And that is different than the corrugated metal.
Right, like, like born metal.
And and we did say we do not want the flat or corrugated metal.
When you said things weren't allowed, I didn't hear T one eleven over there. Do we take that out or we definitely don't want that.
We can add that back in, we definitely need that.
Take it if it's taken out, they can put it back. I noticed that one of our buildings is going with that. See, they've taken off the backside yesterday.
And I think the Dollar General's hardy plank, we have that in there. So back to the, the T C O, I guess, which we're talking about. Um, one of the things I read in there is that the, the doors cannot face the highway. Well, obviously Dixon's does face the highway. And again, I I don't see a problem with that. I think it's a great looking building, but we need to address that one way or the other. That, that particular lot, if they did not have the option to access it from the front of the highway, we'd been a non-buildable lot.
He cannot access this one for that.
No.
He has R P A.
He had to build it up just to get what he's got.
Yeah, he was very limited.
He's, he's probably got a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of stone under that building. He's, he's probably got a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of stone under that building.
Lot of site work.
Yeah. So I, I would be in favor, uh, uh, just based off of that building. The, the way that they come in from the front, if, if we require side or rear entry, things like RPAs and setbacks are gonna limit a lot of properties, so I just, again, we need to make a decision on that, because whatever we decide is, is gonna be what we decide.
Understood Dixon's bill has been built right in front of a college park. It has the side, no doors, it looks like crap.
It does.
And there's all the doors with the brickwork on the side, but what you see is the plain side would know anything in all the eight million electric meters.
Which that really should have required some sort of screening.
Screen or some kind of.
It took out all the meter bases down the side of the building. And even if you go into Central Crossing where HH Huntsville and all those houses, they've required um, lattice around all the heat pumps on the house, just to kind of screen them from the neighbors' view shed.
Does require the heat pump.
Yeah, but like he said, the whole meter base is facing the three sixty side on that commercial.
That new building right in the entrance of AM Lane to the.
We had that discussion long time ago.
So in, in item three of our TCO, it says screening shall be required in accordance with the requirements of section ever fast forward, loading docks shall be provided at the side or rear only. It seems like the wording and, and the language in item seven about the work area doors and open bays is more or less referring to the same thing that is in item three. With the dock doors and so forth, so we're kind of, we, we have some duplication there, I think that item three does what it needs to do, and I think we should strike the large work area doors and open days from from item seven, or at least word it with some kind of exception for shops, uh, you know, auto shops and so forth that. Correct.
Dixon's is their main main door where they work, not, it's not a service center.
And it would just be that one, that one sentence, large work area doors are open base shall not be, shall not open towards or face the public right of way. We can leave it, I'm okay with leaving the rest of it in.
So remove that one sentence.
Right.
Do that, agree. Is that the only thing in the TCO, Ms. Graham?
Um, under number seven, we did add um, no building facade, whether front side or rear shall consist of architectural materials inferior in quality appearance or detailed to any other facade materials on different building facades, but rather to preclude the use of inferior materials on sides which face adjoining property and thus might adversely impact existing or future development, causing a substantial depreciation of property values. And we took out the next sentence. Um, all mechanical equipment, including ductwork, air compressors and other fixed operating machinery shall be either screened from you with either a solid wall, solid fence or landscaping are located so that such items are not visible from the public right of way. Outside storage of equipment, materials or supplies, if permitted in the underlying district shall be permitted only in the side or regards and shall be screened from a view from the public right of way with fencing or landscaping. And then under fencing, um, fencing along the public right of way is discouraged. But if you such fencing shall be landscaped to minimize visibility from the public right of way or be of a style which is harmonious um, with the rural agricultural and historical character of the county. Chain link fences are, shall be prohibited. And then we, um, a number twelve, a pedestrian way sidewalk of no less than five feet of clear undefeated areas shall be provided across the frontage of the property and the ADA client. All pedestrian ways must join one another or connect.
I thought we had struck that last time.
Do I want to take that out?
Well, I think it, it was out and it got put back in.
We struck that ten years ago when they had the discussion about
Right.
areas that uh, you couldn't put sidewalk in. Uh, and about the connectivity of sidewalks. I think somehow we should require within, within a commercial development. Sidewalks at the front of the building, uh, and then in the body development, um, I think it's necessary that we have connecting sidewalks and maybe even across the front. But that's where you've got to connect, able to have connectivity. But just for single building out there.
So ju- just like Dixon, you would not see where a sidewalk was necessary and it's no.
No connectivity.
There'll be no.
Prior to dropping, prior to dropping it, we required it in front of the Dollar General, three sixties. Being the sidewalk going no way.
Well, that's one of them.
Yeah.
Controversy was over.
So we strike that out of the PUD is gonna be a whole nother, we know we have to address it there.
And in our subdivisions too.
Yeah.
Um, and that we had exceptions to the transportation quarter overlay district requirements. Exceptions to the development requirements and standards specified in this article may be granted by the order supervisors following a recommendation by the planning commission in accordance with the procedure set out of, as in section.
Except. We've been going back and forth for six months, so that should give us pretty close to where we're trying to be.
Do we need a motion to?
Do we need a version?
Well, if with these changes, if you're good with it. Um, we do need to, you know, have a public hearing because it is a change. Um, and then it would go to the board. So we probably need to go through several items and, and do them.
Could the use matrix that we do at next meeting be included with that too, and then we just do it all at the same time?
We could have to call the period on multiple items.
Right, that might be good. That's all for the TCO. Okay, next item we have is manner subdivision ordinance.
So with this one, um, we, we had made a few changes, but under section eighty-six dash four fifty-four, under number four streets, A, generally there shall be only one access to an adjacent primary or secondary highway by new street and no lot shall have direct access to an existing primary or secondary highway. And then we've added, however, lots confront an existing secondary highway with the use of a shared driveway between two lots.
Mister Chair. Object to that, um, I think we we provided that ordinance in response to uh, comments by the public. The public wanted to basically coming up to rural areas of the county. And that ordinance was in response to that. I think if we go back to this double driveway, uh, we're inviting problems. We're continuing the problem that not necessarily problems, but the rural setting that we have attempted to create when they passed this ordinance. The and I mentioned this, we left it down. Uh, site was developed on about six hundred up near, what is it, uh, Bureau Church. Uh, it's got a single nature, it's going straight back. With mention of Alpha Van Coldestack in back, it's traversable, power trucks easily. Just like in cul-de-sac. It provides a whole lot cleaner look to the rural areas of the county. And I, I object to moving to dilute that. There are several layers that this grid system can be developed depending on the shape of a lot. It's used in numerous other counties that I've worked in, been involved with. And I, I think it's, it's the way to go for the future development of this county has been, it was pushed uh, into what was it? What's the word right now, but if, when, when the public looked at this and they when we, when the consultant sent out the survey, what I'm trying to say. It was overwhelming in the survey that they wanted to improve the rural site of the county, rural landscape. And I think this was an answer for that. It's uh, it's more costly yes. But um, I don't think that we should, should dilute that and then like, that's my, my opinion. I, you know, I think the argument that our trucks can't use it is not correct. So, I don't know. Anybody else wants to weigh in on that, but I'm not totally opposed to.
If I may, yeah, Chair, Mister Chair, um, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what, what we're, what we're trying to get at here, so this is, this would be, for example, four consecutive lots fronting an existing highway that we're, that we're discussing, that would be the, this, the scenario, so we're, so we're debating whether to have one singular drive versus two. Correct.
Stand out, I'm gonna pass that one off. The one singular.
The one singular drive is a internal streets or the internal street system. Um, that internal street system can accommodate. We don't have to have four, oh, the lots running the secondary highway, it, uh, in some cases you have the first frontage. Um, some cases like the one up on Route, uh, Route six hundred. The lot is linear, so they have one street going back, straight back in median with uh, cul-de-sac in the back. The entrances to the four lots are onto that internal street.
So that, does that require some kind of um, agreement between the, the owners to, for.
The agreement that would be required was if they, if the developer chose not to develop it, fully develop it to state standards and just have a gravel surface or whatever, then there has to be an agreement or the, the property owners don't get an agreement, but, but the it would have to be in the ordinance that the, it would be a street system and the property owner would have to maintain that internal street. It would be much better if it were built just completely to state standard with pavement. Actually, the pavement will be a surface treatment on top of six or eight inches of, of stone.
So the so the alternative would be two shared driveways in that, in that example.
Two shared driveways, and again, I'll, I'll tell you, first thing I understand is this, when you got when you got shared driveways, easements for shared driveways or whatever. And the sheriff will tell you this too, the big, one of the biggest complaints he has is about property owners fights over shared driveways, who's gonna maintain, how to use it, whatever. It's much better to go ahead and build that state standards and let the state maintain that, uh, that's internal street system. The state will maintain, will take into full maintenance anything over three lots. But they won't take two lots. So the shared driveway would be owned by or owned and shared by the uh, two properties it serves.
I imagine a state, a state a state maintained drive would be fairly expensive though with.
It costs more than driveway.
Good segue in, what, what Mister Wagner is attempting to do by having to build a state road to service four lots, you basically make it totally not feasible to do any more minor subdivisions in the county. Which then in, in, in just basically everybody out in the county who wanted to develop their land, you basically take that off the table. Um, to build six hundred feet of state road, which is what it would require, because each lot on either side of it would require three hundred foot of road frontage. That's, that's just not feasible. The plan that I gave you in front of you, the first page shows the four entrances that we used to be able to do and that some people weighed in, and I think the, the Berkeley group study that Mister Wagner is referring to, what was the percentage of people that weighed in on that countywide? I think it was about three percent.
It's five hundred people.
Yeah, five hundred out of seventeen thousand, I don't know what the math is on that, but so the first page here shows the four entrances. The second page shows if you had four contiguous lots, you still would have to build a road system between lots two and three. And you still would have to build a road system over to lots one and four. So you would still create a shared right of way between the four lots. That you would still have the same issues of people sharing a road. But now instead of two, you have four. And as I alluded to a couple of months ago in the meeting, these two houses, lots one and four, a fire truck would have to travel down this middle road and go left or right to come back to the two houses in the event of a fire or an emergency. The third page shows the shared driveways, which I think, and I think staff recommended this, their approval of this last time, are reducing the number of entrances from four to two. And you have shared driveways between two lots, but it's much easier for fire police or whatever to be able to get into these two lots, and you only have two people sharing a driveway instead of four. And the other problem that gravel roads or shared right of ways, when you have multiple houses on them. It, it's just things like people riding four-wheelers and ATVs and stuff like that, and if you go back to the second page, if you can only imagine four people, people one and four have to drive across their neighbors every day to get to their property. It, it just doesn't, I, I, I understand trying to stop the minor subdivision ordinance, but it just does, it, it creates so many more problems, I feel like a, a good compromise is the shared entrance between every two lots.
Just to, while you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Have the fire engine turn.
How does it turn around?
Have fire engine go in there and lights fire and get back there. What do they got to do?
Well, like most driveways, they would probably back in. Or pull in and back out, but that's a much shorter route. But it's a much shorter.
They would do the quickest thing they could to get to the fire and it would pull in and then they would have, have an issue.
Put it in page, in page two, only the main road going in would have to be a V dot standard road. When you go left or right, they could be gravel driveways easements across their neighbors. So a fire truck trying to travel seven hundred feet down one lot, turn three hundred feet across the back, turn and come back up to. Down one lot, turn three hundred feet across the back, turn and come back up to a house that was on fire.
Is this, what, is this what you're referring to?
Currently, yes. That's, that's your one entrance to service four lots. If all your lots are contiguous on the road.
We got this, we got the cul-de-sac.
That's on a narrow piece of land where you stack your lots. If you had lots, one, two, three, four, you'd have to travel up this road or cross these. But suppose the four lots were contiguous on the road, which is allowed right now. So they still have to go in and cross their neighbors to the left. How, how would you do it on these four lines? Four contiguous lots. Four lots in a row.
Could we ask staff if they have any opinion on what's been provided to us?
Did you get some over there, Chair?
So let's see how we were doing it before the ordinance changed. Um. We're really, I, I had not heard of any complaint. Uh. Uh, it was discussed it when we were doing the reviews, that it was becoming too many driveways. That people were stopping, and this is just on our secondary road. Uh, so that is why, uh, the planning commission came up with the one entrance. But. Even doing it this particular way. You're still reducing it by two.
By fifty percent.
Yeah, by, by fifty percent, by two driveways, so. I think this would work.
We allow both.
I'm sorry?
Could we allow both scenarios?
Because. In, in some instances, uh, doing that lane does help some people. To, to get the development in where they otherwise would not be able to, because they wouldn't have the frontage along the secondary road.
Like I said, like in case they were all lined up and straight road would might work because you could go off the main road. Like for this particular case, it looks like two. Yeah, I'd be willing to.
To allow both.
To allow both, everybody. Be okay with that or does it want to stick one or the other?
I, I think with more options somebody adds. I don't see, uh, see, I don't see a significant deterioration of our rural integrity of our county, uh, we go from. From one drive to two drives. I mean, certainly I can see the, the four drives, but, um.
Does I feel the same way?
Mr. Kellam, I hate bringing this up, but I think you're. That, that's been brought up before, so bring it up again.
Table it, maybe talk about it again later.
I do think having more options. Could be beneficial. I believe this is one of those things that I've. Field staff, you know, can guide us in the right direction. Um, and I, and I trust the. The, the guidance that they give us.
Ms. Graham, do you think that both would be beneficial?
I do, uh, because there are certain places where you're not going to be able to get a, a drive in there. Easily. But then there are other instances where you're not going to be able to do the development unless you have a lane. Um, and this is reducing it, uh, by. It, it's reducing it by fifty percent, so you won't. And it wouldn't be on the primary road. It, it would just be on the secondary.
Do we need to make a motion or just move with you or?
Well, we would have to hold a public hearing. So if, uh, if you want to make a motion, you're in agreement to it, we'll. Bring it before a public hearing with the other changes.
Didn't have a motion, we have a second. A motion properly seconded, uh.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kellam.
I.
Ms. Hyde. Uh, Mr. Wagner.
Hey.
Mr. Slater.
Hi.
Chairman Greenwood.
Hi. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I think we need to, uh, before this gets, goes any further and, and goes into another. Closed session board meeting. If, if anybody has any questions. About my business dealings or what I do for a living, uh, yes, I am one of many builders in the county. Yes, I do. Major subdivision, I mean minor subdivisions from time to time. I'm, I'm one of several builders in the county that does that. But, uh, as Mr. Wagner alluded to, Mr. Wagner, if you have some questions, let's talk about it in public. Let's, let's, let's not pump up Mr. Moore to do it in closed session. Let's talk about it in open session. So how, how would that possibly be? Let's give some specific examples. How, how are we flirting with that? Well, I just, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm getting tired of the, the, the backwards comments and the dark of night. Let's talk about them in public. Well, you, you don't like being called out, obviously, but you like to make an accusation.
I did not make an accusation.
And, and yes, I do make my living building houses in the county. And, and I have commercial properties in the county, every one of which I submitted to the county today.
I will add, I did submit the conflict of interest.
Right.
Um, information to y'all that we are sending to all of our boards. Um, and if the planning commission would like. Um, then our county attorney can offer some training, of course, can do tonight because we're not fair for it. Um, but if that is something that y'all would like, press that set up, we can certainly set that up.
He gave, uh, the board guidance on that particular subject, and there is no conflict of interest. The conflict of interest would be if. Mr. Kellam had a piece of property that he, this was his piece of property and he was trying to develop and he was coming to the board. And wanted to pass something and then he would have to reclusive itself and he is willing, I'm sure, to do that. It's. Just in general, I mean, any, everybody in general has something to do with it because we all live here. Just continue, oh, just move on. Uh, it looks like that's, that's all we have. So, uh, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Say it. Motion made properly seconded in the discussion. Sing, uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Slater.
Hi.
Mr. Kellam.
Hi.
Ms. Hyde, uh, Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Chairman Greenwood.
Hi. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks everybody for coming.